Good morning. We'll call to order the Budget and Finance Subcommittee, Committee Number One. Thank you, everyone, for joining us Wednesday, May 21st, 2025. We have a list of several presentations this morning, so you have an opportunity, 10 minutes, Madam Clerk, per presentation, and we'll do this, your presentation, and then I have an opportunity to do Q and A. Our first presentation this morning is the Memphis Zoo, a presentation by Matt Thompson, President and CEO. Please come up, state your name, your address, and as you speak, different speakers, please state your name as well each time.
Got it. Well, good morning. Thank you for having us. It's our first time presenting to you, and it's a privilege to be here, and just wanted to say thank you for what you do, for our community. We do have a presentation for you this morning, and I want to tell you a little bit about what we do, and then what we have planned, and we do have an ask this morning. Next slide, please. Next slide. So, as far as zoos go, we have a very robust animal collection, a very dynamic, and I would say unusual, animal collection even amongst zoos. So, we are admired within our field. We see roughly a million people annually, and that 52% non-local attendance, we're very proud of this number. We're the only zoo in the state that can claim to be a true destination zoo. People are coming to Memphis to go to the zoo, as opposed to just being here to see other attractions. So, more than 50% of our paid admission comes to us from beyond 50 miles. Also, our current economic impact is approaching 90 million annually. Next slide, please. There's no official zoo ranking, but we are always in some category for a top zoo. We're always mentioned in the top 10, usually a top 5, sometimes 1 or 2. Most recently, we were top 2 with the Newsweek poll. Next slide, please. So, our community impact, this is a number that we're very proud of. So, we have a program called Tennessee Tuesdays, and it's a free program, and well over 10% to the tune of 109,000 people annually visit the Memphis Zoo for free. We're also very proud of the work that we do, investing in our youth. So, we see over 60,000 schoolkids annually, with more than 50% of those being from Shelby County. Also, 56% plus of our memberships reside in Shelby County. Next slide, please. So, we have been working very hard over the last 30 years to develop a world-class zoo for Memphis. So, from 1986 to 2016, $118 million in capital was invested in our zoo, and this built out roughly half of our campus. So, we were a city-owned, city-operated facility. We became privately managed, still city-owned, and it needed a lot of work, and so roughly half of that has been done. And 2016 was when we opened the Zambezi River Hippocamp. And you can see there that 69% was raised by the Memphis Zoological Society and 31% by the City of Memphis. Our current operating budget is 26 million. 95% of that is generated by the Memphis Zoological Society, and 5%, roughly 5% comes from the City of Memphis. That is a $1.2 million management fee that was established in proportion to our then-budget in 1994, when our budget was $2.8 million total. So, we've received the same management fee from the City of 1.2 for the last 30 years. Next slide, please. To that point, we have seen, as many industries, a large increase in our expenses. So, this is for demonstration purpose, although it's accurate, this is our expenses compared to our visitation. So, we have not seen a sharp increase in our visitation. In fact, we've seen it be relatively flat over the last couple of years, but our expenses, like everyone's, have increased dramatically. Next slide. So, this is our ask today, and these are our top priorities, or our ask is within this slide. So, again, that 1.2 million that we've received for the last 30 years, we have to increase that. We have to have some operational support. If we've shown that we can do anything, it's raise capital. People are very interested in supporting the zoo and very interested in new exhibits, but we have to have some help in operating. So, what we need, in addition to that 1.2, is $3 million. We're looking to add a total of $3 million to that 1.2. And so, what we're asking today is the county to consider 1.5, so half of that. We are asking an additional 1.5 from the City of Memphis as well, on top of the 1.2 that they provide, simply because we are their primary responsibility. However, we would like to propose to you the balance, the 1.5, and to partner with you, and offer an opportunity for a sponsorship for our Tennessee Tuesday program, which we are willing to modify, even expand, if it becomes the Shelby County Government Tennessee Tuesday Program. So, again, our request from you is 1.5. You would become the official sponsor, and we believe strongly that it's an opportunity for the county to increase your community engagement. Next slide, please. We have a very, very powerful social media influence, second only to Dollywood. In fact, we wrestle with them in the state, with Instagram going back and forth, and who leads the charge there. We'll never catch them on Facebook because of the age demographic, but on all other socials, we are very, very strong in the state. So, things like this program can be very, very well-publicized, and we're very well-known among attractions in the state. Next slide, please. So, one of the many reasons that I think we're a good investment, I want to tell you briefly about our future. It's very, very exciting. So, our first master plan was a 30-year endeavor, we finished in 2016, that I told you about, but moving forward, we have a very exciting plan. We have a very strong team in place. We have a brand-new plan. We have a strong conservation focus that we're very proud of. We have very strong community support. The park partners I put in there as a very exciting thing, we are very within Overton Park, with the Overton Park Conservancy, the Shell, the Metal Museum, the golf course, currently the Brooks is there. We work very closely with all of these, and we believe we have created a space in Midtown that's one of the absolute nicest, quite frankly, and safest places in Memphis. And we're on track to be the number-one zoo in the U.S. If this next master plan is fully realized, we will easily be one of the very top zoos in the United States. Next slide, please. So, we have a 20-year, $250 million plan to build out the rest of our campus. Our top priorities immediately are a new, permanent indoor stingray exhibit, an Africa exhibit, which you'll see shortly, that is unparalleled of anything close to us, and a beautiful exhibit called Oceans to Forest. But again, investing in Memphis will strengthen our position as a community amenity and drive economic growth. So, this is our campus. The grayed-out areas are the areas that we improved with the last master plan, that's that 118 million. The green or vibrant colors are what's coming next. The big patch of land on the right is Africa, and let's go ahead and go to the next slide, please. This is a representation of the Africa exhibit. So, this is Looking South. So, on the bottom of the screen, out of sight, would be Rhodes College. But this is a very large elephant breeding facility, which there is not, we're the only zoo in Tennessee to have African elephants. African elephants are on the decline, and we want to be part of the solution here. So, we want to build a state-of-the-art breeding facility that can hold a bull and have lots more space. So, our current elephant facility is less than an acre, and this collectively is 14 acres. It uses up the rest of the land in that spot. It's a beautiful restaurant lodge there on the left, and there's, anyway, this is a savanna concept, like you're going on safari. So, it's a $75 million exhibit and a beautiful addition to our zoo that will attract many people from many miles away. Next slide, please. This is the other Keystone project called Oceans to Forest. This goes in space of where the birdhouse is now. It extends all the way down to the farm, if you're familiar with the zoo. And so, this is an indoor building, and it's a hybrid of a rainforest and an aquarium. There's been much talk about an aquarium in Memphis, and this gets us really close: sharks, rays, rainforest. So, think of very immersive exhibit, walking in, crashing waterfalls, free-flying birds. This is a restaurant inside that overlooks the rainforest floor, that's open for sit-down seating at night, as well as for lunch. So, this is unlike anything we've seen around, and I haven't seen a combination like this in any other zoo. Again, this is a destination kind of exhibit. Next slide. All right, that's the end of my presentation. I'd love to entertain any questions.
Thank you so much for your presentation. We do have one Commissioner in the queue, Commissioner Bradford.
Good morning. Mr. Thompson, you mentioned the 1.5 million would sponsor and expand the Free Tuesday. Could you go maybe explain, one, what does it look like now, and what would this expansion look like?
Tennessee Tuesday has been in place for a long time, and it currently runs from 2:00 p.m. to 6:00 p.m. or 5:00 p.m., depending upon our hours. It's very, very popular, and so that's a very compressed time. And so, we acknowledge that perhaps it's not the best experience, but because it's so popular, and obviously, we need to make revenue, we've always, we've had it in a compressed time, so we can have some paying visitors early in the day. But with this addition, it would allow us to make it all day. So, we'd love to expand it, so people can come early in the morning. And remember, we offer this every single week. This is not, I don't know of any other zoo, I mean, there are some that do like quarterly or once a year, twice a year, something like that. I don't know of any others in the country that does every single week. And so, this would be every single week from open to close, and we could look at March as well, because it's currently not offered in March. And so, I think a program like this would allow us to figure out a way to control numbers, expand it, and bring March back as well. So, it would double the time that this would be available to people. Does that answer your question?
Yes, it does. Thank you. I appreciate that. You only had 10 minutes. I know you also are very involved in conservation efforts, not only in Memphis, but around the world. So, I think that's also something that is notable that you all are involved in. I've read the articles in the paper. It's kind of amazing to me that the city hasn't increased its operating funds over the years. So, I'm happy to try and help find the 1.5 million dollars out of the county budget to get this moving forward and to help with the operation. So, thank you all for your presentation today.
Thank you, Commissioner.
We don't see any other Commissioners in the queue at this time, so thank you so much for your presentation, and a lot of great information. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you all.
All right. We will start with item number three. It's a presentation by MidSouth Food Bank. Scott Forten, interim CEO, come up. And as I stated before, state your name, your address, and whenever you're speaking, whoever's speaking, state your name before you speak. Press the people person. There you go.
First time, sorry. Good morning. My name is Scott Forten, President and CEO of MidSouth Food Bank. Our address is 3865 South Perkins here in Memphis. Joined here today with my colleague, Reginald Alexander. He's our Director of Government and Community Relations. First, we want to thank you all. I thank you all for what you do in the community, but also to let you know what we do in the community and where we fill in the gaps. I'm going to turn the presentation over to Reginald and let him give you an overview of our recent efforts. Reginald.
Reginald Alexander, 3865 South Perkins Road, Memphis, Tennessee, 38118. I just want to thank you as well for allowing us the time to speak before you today. I just want to say food, like air and water, are vital to our everyday life. Having enough nutritious, healthy food is vital to a healthy, productive life, and a healthy, productive people are vital to having healthy and productive communities. So, MidSouth Food Bank's mission, which is to end hunger in the MidSouth, is a lofty goal, but it's a worthy goal and one that we work hard every day to try to commit ourselves to establishing. I want to begin with stats that begin with food insecurity, and then MidSouth Food Bank's response to that food insecurity levels, and then go on to our impact in the community. So, in the first slide, and all of these slides are available in your packets, which will be distributed to you. MidSouth Food Bank serves 31 counties in the MidSouth, including 18 counties in North Mississippi, 12 counties in West Tennessee, and Crittintown County in Arkansas. Approximately 300 partner agencies and programs help us to distribute food to those in need in our 31-county areas, and that includes brick-and-mortar food pantries, mobile pantries, soup kitchens, rehab facilities, low-income daycare facilities, community centers, and youth programs. Next slide, please. Oh. Thank you. So, right now, in our 31 counties, is a 2.6 million population, and the 31 counties that we serve, 2.6 million people. 303,000, 550,000 of them are deemed food insecure, of which 116,740 are under the age of 18. In 2024, we distributed 38.7 million pounds of food totaling 46.4 million meals to 1.3 million households in our total 31-county area. Next slide, please. Could you go back? Couple more. One more. Two more. One more. There we go. And in Tennessee, we have approximately 219 partner agencies and programs in our 12-county Tennessee service areas. Those counties include Lake, Aubion, Dwyer, Lauderdale, Crockett, Tipton, Haywood, Madison, McNary, Fayette, Hardiman, and of course, Shelby County. Next slide, please. 1.3 million people is the total population in our 12-Tennessee county area. There's 181,550 food insecure people in that 12-county area, of which 83,040 are under the age of 18. In 2024, we distributed 22 million pounds of food totaling 26.4 million meals to 760,000-plus households. Next slide, please. That brings us to Shelby County. In our 12-county Tennessee service area, nearly 70% of the food insecure live in Shelby County. Shelby County also receives nearly half of the services and food that MidSouth Food Bank provides in its 31-county service area. There are 165 partner agencies and programs that are located in Shelby County. Next slide, please. Okay, 929,744, that's the population of Shelby County as of the 2020 census. There is a 123,990 food insecure population, of which 63,460 are under the age of 18 in Shelby County. In 2024, we distributed 14.9 million pounds of food totaling 17.9 million meals to 514,000-plus households. And that concludes my portion of the slideshow. I'll turn it over to Scott Forten, interim CEO.
Thank you. In March of this year, the USDA Agriculture, otherwise known as USDA, cut two major programs that food banks across the country have counted on for decades. One that funded the purchase of our local farm fresh foods for schools and cafeterias, the other that funded much of the food and product that food banks expect. The total cuts for 2025 amounted to more than $1 billion in purchasing. Next slide. In addition, 660 million was slashed from school food programs. The USDA cut 500 million specifically intended to help food banks and domestic agriculture. The latter came from the Commodity Credit Corporation, known as CCC, a branch of the USDA Emergency Food and Assistance Program, otherwise known as TFAAP. Food banks nationwide have been counting on the 500 million to feed millions of families and individuals experiencing hunger this year. We use these funds to make purchases within the domestic food supply chain, and months worth of orders that have already been placed in the food bank queues have already been canceled. Next slide. The impact of these two program cuts that will have on the MidSouth Food Bank's service area is estimated to reduce our food pounds by 2.2 million pounds, valued at $4.8 million, that we actually counted on to feed our neighbors across the 31-county service area that we support. Our monthly food purchase budget totals 295,000, with 176,000 currently supporting through federal grants to support donated food and USDA commodities. Next slide. While we anticipate that COVID-era funding would decrease over time, now we face a real immediate reduction. As those grants expire, we reduce our monthly spending by 61,000 in April of this year, and another 48,000 by October of this year, leaving only 67,000 monthly to purchase food through December of 2026. Next slide. Next slide shows our current operating budget. In the first section of this operating budget is our government revenue of 5.3 million. Towards the bottom-left is our PPO expense, which is 300,000, and at the top-right is our purchased food expense of 3.5 million. Adding in our expense for freight of 84,000, our total food purchase for this current year is $4 million. Next slide. One more. As the MidSouth Food Bank prepares for the upcoming 12 months, our focus shifts back to our fundamental foundation of service, which is feeding children, feeding families, and feeding seniors. Our objective is to continue serving Shelby County families at our current service levels, but without an increase in funding, we'll eventually have to make some additional cuts. First set of cuts that we, the first area that we're focusing on in 2026 fiscal year is actually restructuring our Development Department to focus more independently, to rely more independently, and focus more locally on food sourcing locally and fundraising locally, and less dependency on federal funds. We've already begun scaling back our operations, reducing staff. We began this fiscal year, actually, with 89 staff members. Midyear, we got down to 75, and currently, we're at 70. So, we've already reduced headcount by 14. Next slide. The impact on Shelby County is a reduction of 1.3 million pounds of food through our mobile pantry program distribution. The MidSouth Food Bank will have to fundraise and source locally for donors to make the shortfall. We are experiencing about a 3.5% food inflation cost, which totals $844,000 shortfall. Notably is our mobile pantry delivery program, which supports 409,000 households receiving 10.2 million pounds of food each year. Next slide. Next slide shows a breakdown of our distribution points. You can see what we're doing currently at 14 million pounds. In the upcoming year, we're looking at 13.4 million pounds. Next slide. Next slide shows just the impact of mobile pantries in Shelby County, where we are currently and where we are looking at focus on next year. Next slide is our expense assumptions, where it shows our shortfall, and notably is in, we'll have to make up the difference in purchased food, of $844,000, which is a 55% change. How we plan to use our funding? May I continue? So, we plan, what we ask is for Shelby County to consider funding for the MidSouth Food Bank, and we look to utilize funds to somewhat offset our shortfall in purchase food costs of $845,000 to continue our mobile pantry distribution at its current distribution rate, and support just a little more than 393,000 families. In summary, we want to thank Shelby County Commission for considering the MidSouth Food Bank for funding, whether it's in response of COVID pandemic, weather-related disasters, or meeting the everyday needs in the MidSouth. The MidSouth Food Bank will continue to stand and fill in the gap to ensure everyone that comes to our food distributions leaves with good wholesome food. Thank you.
Thank you so much for your presentation. I don't see any colleagues that are in the queue, but I do want to say, you mentioning how you've already have cut staff, we, Commissioner Wright and I, about a year ago, two years ago, time flies by, we were at the food bank and actually volunteering there, and saw a really impressive operation that you have. Does that mean now that you have to lean more on volunteers to kind of help in certain situations? How do you plan on, like manpower-wise, dealing with that?
Yes, we rely heavily on our volunteers, but we also, through some restructuring, have reallocated responsibilities to existing staff. A lot of the cutbacks are where we actually scaled up during COVID, and it's just been a gradual time that we've decreased that staff to get down to the level that we need to be, basically to do more with less.
Gotcha. In your presentation, you mentioned that you partnered with about 165 agencies and programs in Shelby County. If you can, please, do you mind emailing me the list of partners and programs that you work with?
Happy to. Yes.
All right. Thank you so much. I don't see any additional Commissioners in queue. Oh, Commissioner Wright.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and thank you all for being here. Thanks for your presentation. I'm just curious if this is a request that you're making to city governments as well? Is it just Shelby County you're looking at, or are there other entities that you're making a similar request?
Yes, we are making these same similar requests to all areas of our distribution service area across our 31 counties.
Thank you, Commissioner Wright. All right. I don't see any additional Commissioners in the queue. Thank you so much for your time and your presentation.
Thank you.
All right. This brings us to item number four, a presentation by Downtown Commission, Shandell Ryan, President and CEO. As a reminder, come up, state your name, and others who are speaking, please state your name and your address as you start talking during your presentation.
Good morning, everyone. My name is Shandell Ryan, President and CEO of Downtown Memphis Commission. I have with me Penelope Springer, who is our CFO and our VP of Marketing Communications and Events, Mr. Milton Howery. Thank you for the opportunity to present before you. Thank you, Madam Chair, for this opportunity to speak before your committee. Next slide, please. Just a little bit about the Downtown Memphis Commission and what we do. We are a central business improvement district, and what that just means is that we are established to help downtown be safer, cleaner, welcoming with our streetscapes and neighborhoods. We add vibrancy, and we're looking to reduce blight. We have a number of initiatives around that, and we also promote downtown and ensure that we have a strong core. And we do all of this while not asking for any of your county or city taxes. Next slide. This shows our org chart. Basically, we currently have somewhere around just under 50 employees, 49. There's a new initiative that I'll Next slide, please. Just a little bit about the Downtown Memphis Commission and what we do. We are a central business improvement district, and what that just means is that we are established to help downtown be safer, cleaner, welcoming with our streetscapes and neighborhoods. We add vibrancy, and we're looking to reduce blight. We have a number of initiatives around that, and we also promote downtown and ensure that we have a strong core. And we do all of this while not asking for any of your county or city taxes. Next slide. This shows our org chart. Basically, we currently have somewhere around just under 50 employees, 49. There's a new initiative that I'll talk more about as we go through the presentation. You see on the very right, there's a new ambassador program, and I'll say more about that. Next slide. Again, we're just building a downtown for everyone. We want people to be invited downtown, and when they come downtown, for them to feel welcome. Next slide. This shows just a little bit about our population. We are a residential population of about 25K, which is really good for our downtowns. I'll talk more about that soon, but about 8,000 of those individuals are college students. We've got 48% millennial and Gen Z populations, which is really good for growth and for attracting businesses. There are higher education and colleges within our C-Bid area, and our daytime population hovers somewhere just under 73,000. The next slide shows our comparison in population growth with other similar cities. Our line is the one at the very top. Again, we hover somewhere just above, just under 25K, and we're stable where we are, which was really good for us. We're not like a traditional downtown. We have a lot of residential population, but it's good because it helps us to have a solid and strong presence. Next slide. In addition, so two metrics that we look at, we're trying to attract more people, and we also want higher property values. In looking at metric two, you'll see that we are around $1.4 million for downtown and the rest of the city and county, we are somewhere around 200 or 300,000. In terms of our budget overview, we focus on four key areas in the service that we provide, public safety and hospitality, beautification and cleaning and green, community building and development, marketing events and activation. Next slide. This slide shows a screen grab of an app that we use to track the work that we do every day. 16% of what we do is around plant upkeep, that's watering. We have several flower pots in the downtown area. We hang up flower pots certain times of the year along the trolley line as well. We do cleanups, and we also do trash removals, and those are some of the higher percentages of the work that we do. And in the next slide, you'll see some examples of cleanup efforts that we have undertaken. There are stickers that show up everywhere. I don't know who's giving out stickers, but they like to make their ways on the poles, and we work to clean those off. Also, you'll see some graffiti removal and just some general trash pickup that is a part of what we do every day. Next slide. This shows our public safety and hospitality dashboard. We track the engagements that we have with citizens, and that's one of the larger percentages of what we do on a regular basis. We give them directions. We are friendly and greeting them, and that's, I think, a great service to help provide presence on the street. And our public safety initiative, our public safety, like aggressive panhandling, where we help with the unhoused community on certain situations, that's a part of all of what we do. That's 28%, and then 16% on those measures as well. Moving to what we do to help support development, this is a list of our, some of our incentive tools that we use to bring vibrancy, bring people, businesses into our downtown space. This is a couple of pictures of some things that, some businesses that we have helped incentivize to come to life. The picture on the top right is the Zeo Mado Gelato Restaurant that is at Nacitra Hotel, and also Jim Dining is in the edge. Our Open on Main program, oh, sorry, moving too fast, community building. Also, we have an emerging developers program where we, anybody in the public can attend these seminars where they can learn how to be a developer, and you can ask questions to developers. They come and give, share their expertise, and helping the individuals learn just how to be a developer. We think this helps us to lower the barrier for people gaining entry into downtown. Our Open on Main program is a pop-up program that allows businesses to occupy available floor, ground floor spaces. We think that that helps to bring vibrancy for downtown. It's mainly along our Main Street Mall. You see a list there of the individuals that are currently participating in the program. I would love to see you all visit them. They would love to have you, of course. And our Table Ready initiative is very new. We just announced it this month. We have an opportunity to have a pop-up in a restaurant space that's ready and available for use, and we're taking applications currently to fill that spot. In terms of our marketing and activations, this just shows that the number of events, we think that it's really important for us to be supporting events and bringing events downtown. We've supported 374 events in 2024. 228 of those were free. We brought in over 400K. We think the number is higher, but this is a safe estimate. I'm going to move a bit faster so that I can get to our budget number. I wanted to at least highlight, though, the Block by Block, if you can go back. No, you stay, one more forward. So, we are now partnering with Block by Block, who is a national leader, next slide, please, in this space. They have 170 unique programs across the United States, and what they do is help for downtowns to provide clean, green, and safe services. We're really excited about this because we have a program currently, but this is going to allow us to expand our program and also give a new level of expertise to participate. The next slide just shows the areas that they will focus on. One thing I want to mention that I'm really excited about is that we will be inside of the downtown command center. That's the command center that the city established, where they're monitoring cameras every day, and we will have a space in there where we can also provide services. I've visited a couple of the cities that do this work, and having ambassadors in the command center like that has been really great for their cities, and I think it would be great for ours as well. Next slide shows just some of the tools that they'll be using. That on the right is a street sweeper. Power washing, I think, is very important for our downtown. If it's not clean, it doesn't feel safe, and cleanliness is just a big part of what we want to offer for this next budget year, some more equipment that we'll be using. So, next slide will get us to the budget. What we're here for your approval is the C-Bid assessment. So, a part of our budget is the assessment that is in the ordinances, and it's 65 cents per $100 in assessed value for commercial property that's worth over $25,000. And that's what you see in that first number, 4.7 or 4.8 million dollars is what we expect to receive, and that's based on a 2% increase because this is a reassessment year. So, this is what we think will happen. It's our best estimate. We've been conservative in that estimate, so that's what we think it will yield. If you look at our transfers in, that number has increased because we received a grant to help us to expand our clean, green, and safe services by using the Block by Block. And then the numbers below expenses, where you see a lot of the shift from benefits, salaries, and wages down to the public safety and hospitality, beautification, cleaning, green area of the slide, that really just shows the reallocation of the dollars, the same dollars just being reallocated within the budget. So, that is our request for this fiscal year. One other thing I would just want to note, that we are purchasing the equipment, the new equipment that you should start to see. We're purchasing it out of this year to help us to keep costs down over the next three years for this contract. Next slide just shows the breakdown of the budget year over year in percentages of how they're trending. There's virtually flat, but there's additional dollars there, but it's virtually flat from the percentage that we're spending in each category. Next slide. Just some key takeaways. Again, this is an assessment. It's not coming out of the tax coffers. All that we're doing is to keep downtown clean, green, and safe and welcoming, and to promote downtown. Next slide will show our request, and that is to approve our budget, which includes the C-Bid fee that's listed there. Thank you so much. Our apologies for going over time.
Thank you so much for your presentation. Commissioner Wright, you're in the queue.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Good morning, Ms. Ryan and team. Thank you for the presentation. I was curious about the clean and green initiatives. I was going to ask earlier on the first slide that mentioned it, but just the, those, you know, graffiti removal and those types of cleanups and those kinds of things, are those, I guess I got a little confused as you went through the presentation. Are those things managed by your in-house staff, or are you saying that's being transferred to kind of a partnership with an external company? Or can you walk me through exactly how that works?
Absolutely. They're currently being handled by in-house staff. Now, what we're doing is moving to an external partner in Block by Block to take on that work. So, the staff that we currently have, they are transferring to this company and using their methodology in delivering that kind of service.
Okay, that's interesting. And so, will just that one entity take the whole encompass area of?
That one entity will deliver if you can look on slide. Maintain, all of the services you see here, they will be delivering those services in partnership with us, yes.
So, throughout your footprint of the area that you?
There's a geographical area that they focus on. It's heavily focused on the core and some, around some major assets in downtown.
And so, when there are, let's say that there's someone who uses the city number to alert that there's some kind of a problem, does the city of Memphis know to reach out to you all, and you work with that, you will work with that company to?
So, we work hand-in-hand with the city. Ultimately, if someone calls 311, the city's going to handle that. If there's something that involves downtown in a more strategic question, like it's about a blighted building or something like that, they may give us a call, and we'll work together on it. In general, if it's an infrastructure issue or a regular 311 call, they're going to handle it. If we get a call, we're going to handle it. But every day, we're already proactively handling things so that hopefully it won't turn into a call. We just give an extra level of care with the maintenance of downtown, with the work that we do.
Okay, thank you. I might come back in the queue to ask a few more questions.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Commissioner Wright. Commissioner Bradford.
My question, actually, may be for the chair, the budget chair. I'm just trying to make sure I understand the intent. So, DMC is not asking for anything out of our budget. It sounds like they're just asking us to approve it. So, is that part of our budget process, or is that a separate resolution that we have to put together?
May I? It will be a resolution that we have to approve.
Thank you. My other question is for the DMC. So, we are currently trying to figure out how to fund a jail, and whether that goes back in the same location or other location. And I can certainly understand if you don't want to answer this question, but what benefit would it be to the downtown to possibly build a new jail someplace out of downtown?
I've seen in other jurisdictions jails move out of downtown, and it's been a great opportunity for the community. For ours, I think it would be a good opportunity because we've got our convention center that's close nearby there, and it could just bring something new into that space if that is the will of this body and of the mayor's office. I think it would be a good thing for downtown. Yes, sir.
Thank you, Commissioner Bradford. Commissioner Mills, you're in the queue.
Thank you. My question was basically asked, so this is not an additional funding, okay?
Yes.
And this, your budget, we're funding, we're just approving it? We're not?
Correct. There's an assessment on top of taxes that this community has agreed to have be a part of their tax base, and so this is assessment on top of, so it's not out of your tax dollars, your budget to tax dollars.
Okay, so, all right, I can put a zero here in this list.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Okay. That was basically it, as I do my math. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Mills.
Thank you, Commissioner Mills. Commissioner Wright, you're back in the queue.
Thank you again, Madam Chair. And so, just maybe one or two more questions on the graffiti, because this was something that I was kind of trying to research as I've seen it, and not necessarily downtown, but I've just seen more and more litter being discarded and more graffiti throughout the city and the county. I noticed in doing some research that some other cities are using nonprofits in a more strategic way. They're like LA in particular has at least one nonprofit, probably multiple, that's all they do is graffiti removal and I think other kinds of cleanups. And so, I'm just curious, so is it Block by Block?
Block by Block, yes, sir.
Is that, so is that a nonprofit?
It's a for-profit entity. They are actually a Tennessee-based company, but it is a for-profit entity, not a nonprofit.
Okay. And did they win some kind of a bid process?
They did. We had a RFP process. March is when it concluded.
Okay. I guess I'm just curious on that because it seems to me like an area where we could get justice-involved individuals, a starting opportunity on building a career, things like graffiti removal, pickup. I know that there's at least a couple of organizations locally that have that as their emphasis, and we probably need more of that. But I, and maybe that's not a question, but just sort of an encouragement to you to, as you work with them, maybe encourage them or other partners that you have to look into relaxing some of the, if necessary, relaxing some of those hiring requirements so that we can get some folks a new chance, a new start at life.
Yes, and they do utilize the Second Chance Program, and they are working with those kinds of organizations to recruit for individuals to be a part of the team, absolutely. Yes, sir.
Thank you, Commissioner Wright. And based upon his final question, if I understand correctly, so you're saying while you're out and about, and if you see something that has graffiti on it or something that needs to be cleaned up, you go ahead and kind of be more proactive around it?
That's correct. We will go, if it's not private property, we will go ahead. If it's on city infrastructure, we have the approval to address things that are on city infrastructure. If it's on private property, we have to make an arrangement, make an agreement, or talk to that business owner about removing it from their property if they do not want us to do it, if they want to do it. So, it's a partnership at that point.
All right, thank you. Commissioner Morrison, you're in the queue.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And I'm sorry I missed part of your presentation, Ms. Ryan, but I'm pleased to see your budget looks to me like it's increasing about 16%. Is that correct? And then what, and where is most of that funding coming from?
So, we're receiving a grant that's helping us to deliver the clean, green, safe beautification programs. That's a major part of that increase.
And then, it looks like at least about 35% more or more of your budget goes to public safety. Is that correct, or is it closer to, is it a larger amount when you take in all of the salaries and?
It does include salaries, and that includes everything, yes, ma'am.
Okay. Well, as you know, that's just the number one priority, at least for this commissioner, public safety right now, and because due to our lack thereof, I think we've lost some population, and that's hurting our tax base. And so, I would just encourage you all, who approves your budget then? Both this body and the city, is that correct?
That is correct, yes, ma'am. And I would like to mention, if I may, we're also going to have space inside of the downtown command center where we're helping to monitor cameras as well. I don't know if you had an opportunity to hear that, but we partner really closely with MPD on the work that we do, and we also have like safety walks and things like that that help with the unhoused community. We do that every two weeks where we're with the Hospitality Hub. We are with also, what is it, Alliance Healthcare, just to ensure people have the mental support they need and also the services they need to seek help.
Wonderful. Well, we're thankful for your work, and I would encourage you, as you can, to make public safety an ever-increasing part of your budget because I think therein, we're going to make the community a thriving place for all of us to live, so.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Morrison. Commissioner Wright, you're back in the queue.
This is my third time in, Madam Chair, so I don't know if I need to make a move. This is my third time in, Madam Chair, so I don't know if I need to make a motion, but now I've forgotten what I was going to, oh. So I think the state has put forward at least $100 million towards some of the downtown safety stuff, maybe another tran, tran, or whatever that word is. It will, will you all play any role in utilizing those dollars?
Absolutely. We are working on applying for that. It's specifically, C-Bids can apply for those dollars, and we're already underway.
I don't see any additional commissioners in the queue. Thank you so much for your presentation, a lot of great information, and thank you for the tidbit that you just mentioned at the end about the safety walks and working with Alliance. As you know, on the commission side, we've been talking a lot around mental health and how that really is probably one of the key things you need to be thinking about regarding some of the unhoused and public safety. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. We, actually, number five was a presentation by Highland Park Oaks, and that presentation is not happening today. So we are now at item number six. Director Tipton, if there is any words that you would like to add or state? She's shaking her head from afar, so for the listening public, she has nothing to add. If that is the case, any other questions before we? Commissioner Mills.
Thank you. My question is budget books. How can we proceed with the budget moving forward? We've got nothing. We've had nothing. What are we doing here today in entertaining nonprofits when we don't even, we have a big old back book of requests from the county, but we've got absolutely nothing to work with? And I find this infuriating. I'm to the point, and I'm trying to be very sensitive because I know some people, when there's pushback or on anything, they, well, we see what we're dealing with. But this just is not acceptable, what we're doing here. This whole process, especially, I mean, it's not the first year, but this has been the worst year. There's zero information, and it's May 21st. What are we doing? That's my question. And that's to the chair and the budget chair, that this is acceptable, that this is being allowed, because we can't do our job.
Thank you, Commissioner Mills. I was looking at the chair if he was going to respond, but I do know that last night there was a conversation about you will receive something digitally. I'm looking at Director Tipton, and I think she wanted to step, stepped up.
Good morning. Audrey Tipton, Director of Administration and Finance. I know last night the proposed was uploaded to the system, and that will be communicated to you today. They worked through the night to get a book prepared, so you should have that today.
When will we get the book, the hard copy?
You should have it today, and we'll have it digitally, and you'll get the hard copy probably no later than Friday, but it will be digital.
I'm just, I'm at my wits' end. It's May 21st.
It's digital.
Thank you. Well, I want the hard copy, please. Thank you.
Commissioner Morrison, you're in the queue.
I think I'm singing somewhat from the same hymn book as Commissioner Mills on this, but I did speak this morning to Mr. Thompson, who said just the exact same. So apparently it's online. I asked for a copy to my email box today, and I would think that maybe all the commissioners would want that. So if you could facilitate that for all of us, that would be terrific.
Thank you, Commissioner Morrison, for that. Let me put it on the record that we're all are asking for the budget books. It's not like only certain people are asking for it. I'm very clear on, we were supposed to have a budget book as we, the timeline was the timeline. Nothing has changed. So I think we're all pushing the same around a budget book, hence why we're getting it digitally versus the hard copy. I think, I want to make sure we all understand that everyone up here, each commissioner, has asked the same question. Thank you so much. Commissioner, Chairman Wiley.
All right, yeah, thank you, Madam Chair. Yeah, no, I would agree with that. I think obviously we all want the budget as soon as possible because there's a lot of work to do. And as I've stated many times, like my, my hope is that we would have more time to be able to really dig in and understand the budget, and that's difficult to do without seeing it in front of us. So it's a bit disappointing on my end, too, but have also pushed the mayor's administration to get us this as soon as possible, even if it's in digital form. So I'm glad to see that that is happening today. Another just request that I want to make sure is clear, Director Tipton, if you can help us here, Director Tipton?
Director Tipton.
Director Tipton. Just wanted to make one thing really clear as we're preparing the, make sure that we have this budget that we can dig into, is we need to be able to see clearly what is included within it and what is not from the requests that we've received and been presented. We have, we have organized a table of these requests, but we need to see it. And as we've seen in years past, there's been an exhibit that has shown what has been included, what has not been included, because that'll help us in terms of the amendments that need to be made. And then I think Budget Chair Clay Bibbs has made clear and should continue to make clear how we take those up and in what order, because we need to look at items that this commission has voted to include first. We need to look at statutory items as well before we get the discretionary items. I think that'll help us as we work through the process to make sure that we're clear about it. But just want to echo the sentiments that, you know, we can only do as much as we can do with, with what's in front of us, and so the faster we get that, the better job I think we will be able to do. But I just want to make sure that as we start entertaining amendments, that we do it in a very sort of clear process so that we understand what's most important to just the business of the county, which I know is, can be challenging, but my hope is that that's what we can do, and then get to any discretionary items after that in terms of amending the proposed budget. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Chairman Wiley, for echoing that, because that was the conversation that I had with Deputy Director Thompson around this same thing, making it very clear because we've done the work on our end as far as spreadsheets, as far, as far as showing. We actually sent out additional links of each meeting, subcommittee meeting, but we still need it very clear for us when we receive it around what has made it and what hasn't based upon the ask. Commissioner Morrison, you're in the queue.
I just have one more comment relative to the budget for, just for the commissioners to think about that I think it's good to be aware of. You know, we have an increasing number of nonprofits coming before us, and they're all doing great work. At the same time, we're in peril because we're looking at a property tax increase. To me, it looks like that's what might happen if we don't figure out how to balance the budget in a responsible way. And so I looked back to the, to when I came on the commission in 2019's adopted budget, and I just think it's useful to know that we have doubled our grants to nonprofits from then to now, doubled from $9 million to almost $19 million this, this current year. And that's outside of all of the flow-through grants, which, you know, there's a stronger case, in my opinion, for those because the money's coming federal through the state. That's different. I'm talking over and above what is sent to us coming out of the taxpayers' dollars. And I would just argue that the taxpayers want to allocate their own dollars, and so just some food for thought. I know there's going to be differing opinions on, on this, but I think that that's a place that we really need to have our antennas up as we look at the budget, and that's all.
Thank you, Commissioner Morrison. And I think if, that is something we're going to look at. I think we need to be fair around how many of that, those dollars were ARPA dollars in that increase, as you be able to really do a true comparison. Do see the Director Thompson, Deputy Director Thompson, he came in. I want to give you an opportunity to address, if you were listening, any of the comments before we officially adjourn.
Michael Thompson, Deputy CFO, Administration and Finance. I'm happy to address any of those concerns. I was coming down the elevator, but I will say that we have uploaded a line item budget this year for Commissioner Sugarman and everyone, and it can be found on our county's website.
Can, okay, great. That's good to hear. What you missed probably is the fact that we would like to have that sent to us via email as well, probably hopefully as soon as you leave here, sent to all commissioners so that we can have it at our fingertips to be able to do it. And the question was, when will we have the official printed book?
Michael Thompson, Deputy CFO, Administration and Finance. We're happy to take that PDF and print it, or, you know, that is the proposed book. It's actually online. It's like 300 and some pages, I think it is, so that'd be a huge document because it is by line item, right? So it's not smaller as it was. It is by every line item, so it's huge. So I think PDF may be the best way to utilize it, and maybe you can print out certain pages of it from the website if you would like to, so.
Commissioner Mills, you're back in the queue.
I'm going to be that person. I don't ask for much, but I would like it printed.
Commissioner Morrison?
I definitely also want it printed. I'm still referring, like I just did, back to the old budgets, and so I think it's very useful to have them at our fingertips. I'm old-fashioned, I guess.
I think you really need to be prepared for.
Why don't we make sure you print them for everyone?
Right, for everybody.
Okay, yeah. I mean, we print a lot of stuff and probably stuff we shouldn't print, but this is the one thing we should print.
Absolutely.
But I would like you to verify that when I made, I don't know if you heard me, the comment that from the 2019 adopted budget to the last year's adopted budget, the grants to nonprofits have more than doubled from $9 million to about $19 million. And, and the question was, was some of that ARPA? And I believe that answer would be no, because there are other grants that are flow-through grants to ARPA. Is that, am I correct?
Michael Thompson, Deputy CFO, Administration and Finance. I would like to get that information and bring that back to you, because I do recall that we did significant grants using ARPA dollars, but I can also research the other grants to see what those numbers are.
Director Tipton, would you respond to my question directly? In the, in the budget book, the adopted budget from 2019 says that our grants to nonprofits were roughly $9 million, and then last year in the adopted budget, closer to $19 million. And I believe that's separate from flow-through grants. Am I correct?
I'm sorry. Audrey Tipton, Director of Administration and Finance. No, it's not separate. We did use ARPA dollars to fund some of the nonprofit grants. I think we used 1.3 million for two years each year.
Is that not on a different line item where grant in the budget?
No, because the general fund, we show all of the general fund. The ARPA dollars are included in the general fund. So if you're seeing it in the general fund, it would include the ARPA dollars. Maybe I'm misunderstanding.
Maybe we'll look at it offline and then, because I think, thank you.
Okay.
All right, I think that is the last. Commissioner Wright, are you back in the queue? Okay, thank you so much. All right, I think that is it for commissioner comments. Thank you so much to the administration. Looking forward to seeing that email with the digital one and looking forward to actually having the physical book in hand, and this officially adjourns committee number one, Subcommittee Budget and Finance. Thank you.